I'd like to remind everyone to make sure to turn off all your cell phones or turn them to the off or vibrating position, please. Also, please be advised that all our City Council meetings are now broadcast on TV, which is on Comcast Channel 99. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilman Harris?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Councilman Avery is absent today and President Eccles is also absent today. The meeting is being chaired by our President Protem, Councilman Cannon. I'm sorry, got confused there. Councilman Stewart is also absent today. Councilman Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present. The meeting is open for business and we'd like to ask everyone to stand and David Ford will lead the invocation. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Father God, we just pause a moment to say thank you. Thank you that we can call in your name, that we are in a free country and that we can honor you. Lord, we ask you to bless our city, bless the people that make the decisions for our city, guide, lead and direct them in everything they do. We do praise your name in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Public Works Committee meeting, work session and council meeting on September the 6th.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify the payments of accounts for the week of September the 2nd through the 8th.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
That brings us down to proclamations, Mayor.
I'd like to ask Denise Cooy to come up, please. Also, we have several Community Emergency Response Team members here, CERT as it's called. I would like to ask all of them to stand while I read this, please, if y'all would. And these are citizens that have completed a three-week course in civilian community preparedness and response at EMA. Also, we would like to recognize the first responders that have volunteered to teach these courses. Whereas National Preparedness Month creates an important opportunity for every resident of Gadsden to prepare their homes, businesses and communities for any type of emergency from natural disasters to potential terrorist attacks. Investing in the preparedness of ourselves, our families, businesses and communities can reduce fatalities and economic devastation in our communities and in our nation. The Gadsden-Edgewall EMA Emergency County Management Agency and other federal, state, local, private and volunteer agencies are working to increase public awareness concerning the importance of preparing for emergencies and to persuade individuals to take action. Emergency preparedness is a responsibility of every citizen of Gadsden and all citizens are urged to make preparedness a priority by taking four simple steps. One, get an emergency supply kit. Two, make a family emergency plan. Three, be informed about the types of emergencies that can occur in Gadsden. And four, get involved with local preparedness organizations and their efforts. Therefore, be it result of Sherman-Gatton, the mayor of the city of Gadsden, proclaim September 2/11/2011 as National Preparedness Month in Gadsden and encourage all citizens and businesses to develop their own emergency preparedness plan.
Thank you, Mayor, for recognizing this important day. The theme for National Preparedness Month this year is a time to remember and a time to prepare. Sunday, September 11th, Edgewall County responders and the public remembered the victims of September 11th, 2001, and the great loss suffered that horrific day. That was truly a day we'll always remember, one that we hope is never repeated. But the threat of terrorism still exists and it's one that we must prepare for even though it's an unknown. Here in Gadsden and Edgewall County, there are events that have occurred in 2011 in our own neighborhoods that we remember and will most likely experience again. The winter storms, the extreme heat waves, flooding, severe thunderstorms and of course the April 2011 tornadoes. These events are ones that we can prepare for. It is every individual's responsibility to do so by being informed, having a plan and preparing their own disaster kits. Your EMA is here to assist you in preparing for these disasters. It is the goal of EMA to help every individual and family become prepared. CERT is a program that helps accomplish this goal. CERT stands for Community Emergency Response Team. This course is free to the public and consists of 18 to 20 hours of instruction, training in preparedness, light search and rescue, first aid, small fire suppression, terrorism and the psychological effects of a disaster. These courses are given over a three-week period. EMA has had over 100 citizens complete this course, enabling them to be better prepared as individuals, family members, coworkers and neighbors. We have some of our graduates here today. You would stand one more time if you're a graduate of a CERT class. Give them a hand. CERT program could not be successful without the dedication and the expertise of our local first responders and trained citizens. These instructors donate their time and knowledge to educate and train our citizens in preparedness. At this time, I would like David Elliott to come forward, please. David is our CERT coordinator for the EMA and he works very hard and puts in a lot of hours to prepare these classes and to hold them. It takes a lot of time and preparation just to have the classes. And David, we'd like to recognize you as our coordinator and instructor for CERT. Thank you. We also have, I'm sorry. We also have some of our instructors here today that we would like to recognize by presenting them with a plaque. As I call your name, if you'd please come to the front and remain there till all instructors have been recognized. Jason Talton is not here today. Don, Jason is with the Gadsden Fire Department. Don Wiltson with the Gadsden Fire Department. Kathy Hollis, EMA volunteer. Michael Barton with Edgewall County Sheriff's Office. David Bankson with Edgewall County Sheriff's Office. Richard Johnson with Rainbow City Fire Department. Kip Williams, EMA volunteer. Kevin Conklin, Rainbow City Fire. John Ricketson with EMA volunteer. And Greg Jackson with the Gadsden Fire Department. We at the EMA would like to let you know that we certainly appreciate your dedication and your time that you have donated to our agency and to the citizens of Edgewall County. Thank you.
We sure do appreciate everything EMA does and the first responders do for us here in Gadsden, Edgewall County. Y'all do a tremendous job and we do really appreciate everything y'all do. That brings us down to unfinished business. We have none today. Number nine, this is time and place to advertise to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 530 Hager Street in District 3. The last known owners are Eric B. Freeman and wife, Sheena R. Freeman, and Family Savings Credit Union. Does anyone here would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone here wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We started this case in February of 2010. There have been no improvements to the property. There are no permits to improve and we're asking for a resolution today to abate this nuisance.
The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we table this for seven days in recognition of the fact that the council member whose district this represents is not present today. So as a courtesy, I'd like to give that seven-day table so that we can have an opportunity to review and give them the opportunity to speak to this as well.
Second. Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote, please?
Those in favor to table the resolution for seven days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for seven days.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 321 8th Street South in District 4. Last known owners are James B. Stanley and BBVA Compass Bank. Is anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone here wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in November 2010. There have been no improvements to the property. There are no permits to improve and we're asking for a resolution today to abate this nuisance.
The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Mr. President, due to the absence of the district councilman today, I move that we table this action until next week, seven days.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote, please?
Those in favor to table the resolution for seven days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for seven days.
Number 11 through 15, this is time and place to advertise to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution assessing nuisance abatement links against property. Number 11 here is actually a rehab and the remainder of them are grass cutting. There's four locations. I'm going to read the names and addresses on each one. If anyone here wished to speak about any of these, they may come forward at this time. 105 Hart's Avenue, District 7, $9,625, State of Alabama Property Tax Division, Shirley M. Preston. 105, 14th Street North in District 1, 826, Justin Scott Chisholm. Number 13 was 1109 Grand Avenue. That's already been paid by the owner, so we're striking it off the list. Number 14 is 106 Pinehurst Street in District 4, $151, Jerry Salvador, care of Marcy Hardy. And number 15 is 3221 Forest Avenue in District 6, $211, Deborah Phillips. Is anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to any of these resolutions? Does anyone wish to speak in favor of these resolutions? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt all four resolutions.
So moved.
Second. Are there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt all four resolutions, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Number 16 is a resolution authorizing change order number one for improvements to Airport Road. This is for lean concrete placement between the foundation and the bridge and the bedrock. The amount is $27,745.03. The cost will be reimbursed from the combined ARC and EDA grant at 68.87 percent, which The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
That brings us right down into new business. Do we have any new business today?
I have one, excuse me. I have a resolution authorizing donation of a surplus pumper to Phil Campbell Volunteer Fire Department. Ask for unanimous consent, consider.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Now move to adopt.
Second. Do we have any discussion on this?
Yeah, these people lost their pumper truck and so on and so forth in the storm up there and they're very much in need of this. I believe Phil Campbell is near Russellville, isn't he? About 20, 30 miles back off. Yeah. I think this is a good deed we're doing and they need it desperately.
Chief, how soon can we get him here?
We're going to try to make the truck look nice and pretend it gets on the person and we're going to have the local sign companies going to put their name and everything on the truck before we take it. We're going to have it a little nice, a week then, about two weeks. If anybody in the community wants to come and help work on that truck, we'd be glad to help anybody, give them some help in regards to helping out another community that's in the process. It's right next to Appleburg, so it's one of those areas that's hurt for us.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Any more discussion? There's no more discussion. Clerk, would you please take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Do we have any other new business today?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a couple of items. First one that I'd like to ask for consideration today is Legal Department number 341. This is a resolution authorizing agreement between the City of Gadsden and Alabama Power Company for a fishing pier boardwalk on property owned by the city. Ask that we consider this today.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second. Are there any discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. This is actually, again, as I mentioned earlier, property owned by the city. It is located on Broad Street underneath the bridge. So this is again in line with the, this is in line with the bank fishing grant that we received some time ago, or actually last year, to conduct bank fishing development behind the Hampton Inn. So this is yet another one of those projects and I think the city's been tasked with a project timeline of now through the end of the year. So we've got a little bit more time this time than we did the time before. So this is a good thing for the city.
Hey, Derek, I think that was December the 1st or 11th they had to have it finished by. I've got it here somewhere. Are there any more discussion? There's no more discussion. Clerk, would you take the vote, please?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any more?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I have one other item to be considered today under new business. It's Legal Department number 345. Excuse me. This is an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2011 budget to reflect $35,000 from Alabama Power to be used for the fishing pier boardwalk at Lake Street. So again, this is just the budget item associated with the resolution that I just mentioned. Ask that we consider this today.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second. We just had the discussion, that's why I'm pretty sure there won't be any more discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote, please?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Are there any more new business today?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one item. A document, number 211, 347, authorizing agreement between the City of Gadsden and EasyLink Golf Incorporated for services that they are currently providing between a Bridges Golf Course. I would move to, let me get myself together here. I'll ask for a consent to consider today.
Second.
Thank you, Ben.
No problem.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second. Are there any discussion on this? Be no discussion. Clerk, would you take the vote, please?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Do we have any more new business for today? Be no further new business. That brings us down to... Department reports. Carrie Pang, would you want to come and speak to us today first, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just as you well know, some of you are aware that we had some storm damage on Labor Day and we had Nakalula Falls Park closed for three days to get the trees up. I want to thank Public Works for doing that for us to where we wouldn't have to have the park shut down for an extended period of time. Also, just to make an announcement, tomorrow Nakalula Falls Park will be closed again. This time it's for the power company to come in and trim some trees back that have lines that have run through them, as you see them doing on the sides of the road and then their power lines. They've got a couple things they've got to address that are dangerous problems if they did have a power line break. So they're just going to do minimum cutting, so it'll be closed tomorrow. Also, the other announcement I want to make to you is Nakalula Falls Playground will be closed starting next Monday on September the 19th. So the playground will be open through this weekend, then starting on the 19th, it will be closed next week. We hope to have a press release for you guys telling you a little bit more about what's going to be going on as far as the construction timeline, you know, how long the playground will be down and what's going to be taking place and maybe some budgetary items as well at that point in time that we'll be ready to release. But I want to just let the public know that the playground will close after Sunday and it'll be closed for an extended period of time and we'll give you more information with a press release next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Kay Moore wants to kind of speak with us about 3rd Thursday, I think.
Thank you, President Cannon, Council. We are excited. We've got an entire weekend of great events going on. It kicks off with 3rd Thursday, which is evidently a very well-kept secret to a lot of people. Also, the Water Wall next to the Pittman, between the Pittman Theater and the Senior Activities Center seems to be a very well-kept secret too. So two events, well, one event and an unknown event in an unknown location. So if you don't know about 3rd Thursday, it takes place from May to October in the summer months at the Water Wall. Del Nora Reed, who is kind of a bluegrass singer from Nashville, Tennessee, she was the founding member of Blue Eyed Grass. They've been here for three years, but she's coming this year as a solo act. So we're going to have a great time 3rd Thursday at the Water Wall from 6 to 8. Del Nora not only is a musician, she's also an artist. So we are working around an entire weekend to have music and art downtown. We're centering this around Second and Chestnut Streets, which is, you can almost see from here, it'll be at the Blues Club, at the Stone Market, in that general area. You'll see artists painting on the streets in that area, maybe some on Broad, some at the riverfront. But they'll be painting and then Saturday they'll have what's called a quick draw. They'll be painting on Friday, but Saturday a quick draw from 11 to 1:00. And they'll have a, they'll blow an air horn and they'll start painting and for two hours they'll paint. And then it's a, you pay a small registration fee and whoever is judged to the best painting wins the pot, I guess to say. So we're going to have a good time. There'll be a wet paint auction from 2:00 to 4:00 Saturday afternoon at the Blues Club. So just a fun weekend. We're trying to expand not just music but art this weekend too. So we're looking forward to a great weekend. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kay. It's free too, isn't it?
Yes, it's free. Thank you, Mayor, it is free.
That brings us down to remarks by the mayor and council. Mayor, would you like to go first today since you went last week?
Thank you, President Cannon. I just want to make a comment, I guess you might have seen in the paper today, about the chief's position in the Police Department and the Civil Service Board and a few comments from some of the legislators, our local delegation. You know, right now, we've got Captain Harbin, who's been here over 30 years, worked in all departments, all the guys like him, I've had several tell me they want to keep him as their chief. And I have a letter from the Civil Service Board Attorney and a letter from our attorney, both stating that there's nothing that says we can't appoint an acting person for as long as we want to. Nothing says we can't do that. And so that's what I'm doing for right now. You know, we'll see how it goes and apparently the Civil Service Board wants to go ahead and start a search for a chief. I think that is going to undermine him being in charge for however long that may be. You know, maybe six months, a year or whatever. We just see how things go. But I have full confidence in him and I know the men do too. And it sort of bothers me a little bit that it seems like there's getting to be a political football and some outside interference. And you know, that is the biggest, two departments, police and fire, that we have in the city. And it's also the 40% of our budget. And for over 20 years, it's been an issue about the chiefs being out from under the Civil Service Board and answering to the mayor. It should be, it's not a control thing, but you have to deal with those people and all the directors, just about every day I say most of the directors about problems or whatever or if I got problems. And we get more calls about police problems than anywhere else. And you know, since that is so much of the budget and the way things are going, we don't need people from outside the city limits of Gadsden telling us what to do when it comes to public safety. So you know, for right now, that's the position I have on it and I plan to keep it that way. Thank you.
Councilman Harris?
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess I have to say that the mayor is absolutely correct. The people of Gadsden should have the right to make decisions for themselves as far as that issue is concerned and it should not be left up to a legislative body or even a governor to determine how we run the city of Gadsden. To that, to the degree that they're not entering into any agreements with us on anything except making appointments. That being said, we will have a district meeting next Monday, September the 19th, at East Gadsden Community Center. Mike Hilton from Public Works will be there and he will go, he'll be there from 6:00 to 6:15. So the meeting will start promptly at 6 o'clock. Mike will be there to answer questions about Public Works and issues that our citizens have concerns about and questions about that he will be much more capable of answering than I will ever be able to. So if you have questions, District 1 and anybody else in City of Gadsden, come on out to District 1 meeting next Monday night at 6 o'clock. 6 o'clock. I'd also like to commend the City of Gadsden for making good use of surplus equipment in this pumper from the Fire Department. It shows you that being neighborly, you know, will pay off. Our neighbors need help and we're in a position to do it, so we stepped up to the plate and provided that service, that piece of equipment for them and I want to commend the city for that. Now, I stumbled a few minutes ago and the reason I stumbled because I looked at an audience and saw my wife out there and she made me forget everything I was going to say.
Nice, nice.
So that's a good recovery. Thank you, thank you, David. But we also have our regular attendees here today, Sister Tretwell and Buster Porch. And we have another visitor with us here today out of my district, Commissioner Carolyn Parker. So I want to thank you all for being here today, even though you caused me to blunder, but we'll get over that. We'll get over it. That's all I have.
Councilman Williams?
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. So I do want to likewise echo the mayor's sentiment. You know, I try to seize opportunities to disagree with him, but this is not one of them. I really, I really tend to agree with him in this regard. You need not look any further than I track.
You need not look any further than our track record with the last two hires and what I think Andy put together a good article this morning, and it speaks to the expense associated with what's involved with having to undo a bad hire. You know, you hear a lot of folks in the HR world talk about how expensive turnover is. Well, this is the poster child situation for how expensive turnover can be when you hire the wrong individual. So I'm excited about having Acting Chief Harbin in that chair, because I think he brings a great deal of experience, and he's been a good jolt of positive morale in that department, so I'm excited about that. You know, what you're looking at today is the effects of reapportionment and redistricting. So we've decided to eliminate District Three and District Five. And so, no, I'm kidding. I do want to commend the folks who are here today from the EMA, and, you know, we attended a, we had a couple events this weekend, and I can tell you that those events were very touching, very needed. It's unfortunate that we have to commemorate such an event, but one of the things that I think that was said that kind of sums it up, a lot can be said, but I think that one of the things that was said that can sum it up is that these folks run into situations that most of us are running away from, and they sign up knowing that. And that's just, it's incredible, because it just speaks to the kind of people that you are. So again, thank you so much for what you do. The last thing, this is Zero Week for those of us that have been counting down to the 2011 Gaston Youth Explosion. So that's going to take place Saturday, again, at the Gaston City High School Auditorium. Doors will open at four thirty. The event will actually start at five. The kids are talking about it, so there's a lot of buzz, a lot of excitement. There'll be some giveaways for the kids. There'll be T-shirts that'll be given away to the first two hundred young people that show up. So really looking forward to it, and we're looking forward to this being an annual event for us. Immediately following, for those young people that attend the event, there'll be an after-party from eight to eleven at Convention Hall, and we've had some folks to step up and supply food and drinks, so there will be some refreshments at Convention Hall. So we're just excited about this event, and I'm excited to be able to be a part of a team of folks that have really pulled together and pulled together, I think, what's going to be a very good event. That's it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Reed?
Sure. I think the mayor knows that I support him fully from this Civil Service Board situation. I've known Roy Harbin for, what, Roy, thirty, thirty-five years? And I've always said, in the police force or any position in this city, if we don't have a trained person to take these positions, it's our fault. And in this situation, I don't think I could find a better qualified person. So not only will I go with you on that, I've known him and I know his qualifications. And I'm so glad about the PR and the morale in the Police Department, and I don't think Fire needs it as bad, but the police force, I'm just happy to see that that's going to make a comeback and get a whole lot of things done. I do want to commend Mike, the EMA. I think I started it Sunday morning on TV. Then I went to church, and we celebrated, and we remembered, and we went through it. But when I got out there at that parking lot at Goodyear, and I saw the first responders there and heard all the speakers that talked, commend Old Peanut, because I didn't know whether he was going to make it or not, but I love him. It was a very stirring affair. It really was. And I want y'all all to know that I appreciate y'all so much, and especially the water, because I was about to burn it. I really do. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Reed. I do want to kind of just hit on what the mayor and everybody said about you Acting Chief Roy Harbin. He's a good guy. Anytime you ever call him, ask him for anything, ask him for any help, he's always there. He's really got the city's best interest out for everyone, and I know all you got to do is pick up the phone and call him. He'll be glad to talk to you. I do want to announce that Robert left me this to announce for him. District Three Councilman Robert Avery will conduct a community meeting on Thursday, September the fifteenth, 2011, at Carver Community Center at five P.M. He wants everyone in the police tribe to attend this important meeting. I'm sorry my voice is finally gone. I wouldn't have been here today if we would have, somebody else could have been here. If I hadn't been here, we wouldn't have had a quorum, so excuse me for my voice. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Or adjourn?